After they hit some of the bargains. There are trees.
Yeah.
I'll be uh.
All right.
Probably two hundred and twenty people and last week we probably didn't.
No, thanks.
It's very humble. For concert and something else.
There's a lot of. Graduation.
Yeah.
My sister was on.
You're not assuming.
Yes, so. Yeah, so.
Well, that would cost more money.
Once we did.
We can quit the end meeting. No guess?
It's going to keep getting more and more people asking for certificate or signing their online certification. So I'm very, very happy.
Alright, good.
A lot of them will come to do that this week. I'd say I may have pictures.
What is uh?
I I sent her a bunch of information that I was back.
Make sure. Her phone got destroyed.
Oh, no.
She had to repair her phone in spectrum. Which is not an easy thing to do with spectrum. She had no phone like a week ago.
Oh, yeah.
Then she got back and actually was like, oh awkward.
No, never awkward. Never awkward.
Just seeing her. She wasn't ghosting, yeah.
I don't care at all. No, I'm just excited to get going and wish you some.
Look for Angel, this is covered. Who else needs to pack? We've got two more.
I got one.
Did we?
Well, what is?
I think it's been the Indian.
Alright.
We're all we're all.
Yeah, we're working on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, me, I two of them all there.
I don't know if I'm. That will work for your application.
Alright.
It would be close. That would be close. Which unfortunately.
Guys, didn't we have minutes from April?
We're a bit of April.
No, because you were.
April was the um.
There was no meeting.
The last actual meeting we had was at March.
Yeah.
The minutes I got here are from.
From December.
Yeah, they're from December. I was confused. I was like, oh. Yeah, I knew that trial I was gone.
You can meet the.
Yeah, it should have been the March one.
That stuff we have.
No, we have.
Maybe from December.
Yeah, so I thought maybe it was. Yeah. Yeah, because I was reading the way since we was here. I wasn't here. And I was here. So. I should have asked him if he knew. He stopped him.
Have you read that? Three dollars here?
Yes. Yeah, what?
I'll do that electric forest that room. The propane supplier for it. I've never even. What? The propane supplier for it.
Oh.
For all the food trucks and the hot air balloons and.
Oh my god.
And rock there. I have never heard of this thing in my life. I agreed to it not knowing what it was. And I pull up and I'm like, it's ten square miles. So I don't I I was there for a week working, eating toy dollar today.
Wow.
Every day. Now I can't learn it. I'm all bruised up from having to.
Yeah.
Because it would be food trucks like behind other people's stuff. It was like, I don't know if it flooded. The whole backside of the area flooded. Just a mess. I feel like I lost a whole week of my life. Started doing the June, I started this process at the beginning of June.
A lot of people will say that who go there is uh, you know, enjoy that week.
I didn't enjoy it.
You know, take.
I walked into a couple of those.
Yeah.
I'm like, I don't want to.
You can't unsee it.
Yeah, that's what I said. I can't unsee what I saw in this room.
Yeah.
I told you I saw I saw him at the airport getting off flight to Denver. Bunch of crazy hippies, man.
Yeah, they. Oh, why? They do?
They've got cabins and the cabin's a hundred thousand dollars a weekend. They're booked up.
You know, for a bunch of relaxed party holders, they were really tense. Cause the baggage were like coming out. And there's something.
Everyone was everyone was super chill.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, but yeah.
I was I was right next to security. And like if any altercation, you're out.
Is that the private security?
There's two private security guards. There's two marketing companies, eight hundred police officers.
And law enforcement covers that quite well.
Yeah. A big uh state promoter out of California, thanks.
They've been doing it probably. Yeah.
Forty-seven bathhouse, forty-seven of one full of other bathhouses.
We had planned a Girl Scout board meeting.
Uh, score.
During the weekend that it was going out and said, never again will we do that.
Off the ground, right? Today, three twenty-five?
Yeah. Can you uh? Email on board about?
Oh, you know what? I'm wondering if the date's wrong. We got three twenty-five saved. Top says, the top says eleven point six twenty-four. Put the wrong date on these.
Well.
Well, no, it's approved on minus ten point two. Oh, no.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but wouldn't explain how.
I must have been married and saved the document.
No, that sent it, I sent it uh. Something happened.
Well, hopefully with this new format. I like that official.
Oh, I can wait. We do have minutes.
Say, what if they, did you need January February? So when they. He's not a perfect.
We did get a minute, meeting minutes on three twenty-five, but it was the uh, the one of six.
Well, okay. So. So, probably when we went to um. November one.
We may have a slight technical difficulty. Who else did you see?
Angel Nips? Well, yeah, we just covered the same problem.
They did, yeah, I I went to your email where you sent me the uh, March minutes, but they're November minutes attached.
Yeah.
Did you actually take the minutes, man?
I.
Yeah, I would have.
Okay.
Yeah, I was here.
Okay.
Yeah. Something must have happened when. It might it might not got saved.
I'd blame it on somebody else.
You blame it on me? You blame it on me. I'm stuck here.
We'll blame it on Bud, can I?
I'm sure I was scared.
I I sent it, I sent it.
Yeah.
He took a minute, I sent him. So we both made a mistake.
What did he send them? Did he send a year?
No, no, he I didn't.
Oh, okay.
And I might not have.
Something, there was an error in saving somehow. And we, I just sent the minutes that were posted there to you.
Okay.
So, how do you, how do you.
Are you on search? What's his minute, meeting minutes?
Time line is meeting minutes three twenty-five twenty-five. And it was saved on that day at six thirty-five P M.
So the meeting minutes are still three twenty-five twenty-five, but they're not the right. Yeah, they're November minutes.
That was saved on that day. Those must be those minutes.
Because it talks about something in October.
And when I get it, the email, I typically just save it in the folder.
All you see what happened is you modified it at six thirty-five. So you took the old one, made a copy.
Yeah.
Modified the copy, did all your work, and then you saved it to save.
Well, we should probably just just note that in the minutes.
Yep. Hopefully they'll be more squared away when they have this.
Make sure that you have it set up for, it's not in your cloud, right? Not okay, that won't save. Are you going way out there?
Hold on.
You're going way out there.
Yeah, I'm staying awake in the conflict.
Do they punch people if they're close?
It will.
He might.
Only a hundred rooms. I know.
Well, and what I, for the planning commission, um, and because we do, in Manasita, the company, we all sit at the same table. And um, it's, so to me, it's the folks who are presenting should be at this table. They just don't vote. So it makes sense that Bob would be up here. And part of it.
Yeah, but we don't vote.
Huh?
We don't vote.
Yeah, I know. We would not hear the roll call. And then you'll move up a new percent. Yeah, you can move up too, but.
Where's our flag?
Yeah.
Find mine.
I'm looking to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, let's start off with the roll call. Anderson. Becker Wood.
Here.
Crawford. Chilling.
I'm here.
I am also here. So first, we're going to uh, set the agenda or amend the agenda. Anything on the agenda we need to change? I don't have anything for you to change. Okay. So uh, we have no public hearing scheduled. Any public comment? Oh, uh, we'd uh, approve it, right? Motion to approve?
You don't really need a motion as long as the minutes, uh, you know, just note that everybody with any consensus agree to the agenda is staying as presented.
But it's not months. Uh, do we have any public comment? Only once going twice. No public comment. Uh, let's prove or correct the minutes from the twenty-fifth. We do not have minutes the twenty-fifth. There was a computer error and they were lost neither.
So I. I will make that motion that we just note that in the minutes, that the minutes were. Lost and if we can find them, we will, but if we can't, that's.
I don't want to interrupt your motion, but I have anyhow, but make sure that, you know, if anybody has any recollection of, you know, what you did at the meeting, just to memorialize it.
I believe our primary focus was on chapter seven. And the corrections on chapter seven. If I can recall, most of it's typographical things, wasn't it, was substantially wanted to change. And then we talked a little bit about what the vision meeting was to look like. Which happened in April.
And you found that out?
Yeah, and uh, wasn't what I thought of the meeting. Not cooler.
Yeah. So do we want, should I take my motion that we just will type up something to kind of summarize that? And then who was here?
I would be interested in just having it memorialized in the minutes of this meeting, that we can't locate the minutes of Mark, but we already know what happened.
Okay.
And if we can locate them somewhere in Fiberville. We'll bring it back to the table.
I believe that was essentially what we talked about. Okay, so we have a first, a second, and.
A second.
All was in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, unfinished business, you know, Annie?
Yes.
Uh, unfinished business in the reports, so township board representative?
No, that's me. Uh, I was. Yeah. Oh, it's board meeting. Um, we have the annual meeting coming up on Saturday. Um. We're gonna get beds to do, we're we're gonna go forward with the concrete at the beach, not wood or the composite stuff.
Uh. Concrete for the bear?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
It's a lot cheaper, the pass longer, we can do different things. Yeah. We can do different things to decorate it or whatever.
We have paint in your mind?
What?
We have paint in your mind?
I suppose if we could if we wanted to.
I'm gonna go here.
Cool. Hey, that's a bad sound I can recall, actually, right now, top of my head. Sorry, guys.
Have you updated the tower?
No, nothing. Let's end later on, we're just, we're kind of waiting.
That's it?
All I got.
We don't have a, go to where we filled up that it? Moment? Want to initiate it?
No, no big news, other than we're about on par for uh, permits, we're about twenty-two, twenty-three permits, but about half a dozen of those are for temporary dwelling. And for those of you that aren't familiar with what the temporary dwelling is, we allow somebody place a recreational vehicle on their land uh, for up to a hundred and eighty days in a calendar year. Uh, we probably had a half dozen new homes already this year if we pull ours, uh, no real excitement, except tonight, uh, after Mary from S U is done and done, we'll do a, we're gonna do a quick site plan review run through. Get some on the job training.
I think that's the first one, that's new commission.
Yes.
That concludes unfinished business, right?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, new business. So we have our chapter eight, you can roll over. The ones, is that it?
So everybody know Barry Riley with Michigan State University Astonion. All of you were here.
Yep.
Except for me, so.
Yeah, I did create some things to help you go through chapter eight.
Where?
And ideas and things like that.
Chapter eight is pretty uh, vague. Is it meant to be vague or?
It depends on how you look at it. You know, I've I've talked to you guys before, uh, it put a lot of things in it, what I believe. I mean, good points of goals, but in my opinion, and I express this to Mary, there's no real something that you and the public can look at to measure progress by. I'm a big fan, hey, I want to paint the wall blue. Okay, what do I do to get there? Well, get your wife's approval, you know, first, um, go to the store, pick out the color, get the tools you need, paint the wall. You know, these, in in my opinion, the goals in the current master plan are are some good goals, but I think the the strategies and objectives to get there sometime, uh, in my opinion, non-directive, non-functional. I'd rather see, I'd rather see, you know, bullet pointless, this is how we're going to achieve that goal, you know? And and then some people, and Mary may go into this more, some master plans I've seen, they divide it up into near term, mid term, long term, you know, type of objectives. Except.
We're gonna talk about all that.
Oh, I'll just, I'll just shut up. But I, but I like bullet points, and and I did this once years ago down in the city of White Cloud, that's exactly what we did. We divided it into those three categories, and we made it like a checklist right in the master plan. How did we get here? Well, that includes, we should always have a joint meeting with city council, planning commission, and its own board of appeals. We should, we should have two workshops a year just to invite the public in for educational purposes, little things like that.
Do you, so, and that's something we'd incorporate in chapter eight, it wouldn't be a chapter nine for strategy, it would be part of.
No, it might fall under some of your goals there.
Making sure, yeah, cause this this seemed very reminiscent of the old one.
Yeah.
And uh.
Well, that that is the, that is the old one incorporated into the new format, so. So all, so all the language will disappear and Mary, I would, well, you're the chair, why am I saying, she's she's here to help you visualize and get through some of these goals and strategies and how you can get that incorporated into the master plan to suit her needs.
How about, let's done the first, how about we just go real quick and bring on typos and stuff that's, we don't like quick, and then you can, you have to say, or if you hear what you want to say first, then tell us that. I was trying to stick with that order, but I like that idea more.
Do you mind if I approach the table?
Please.
Come to the table. Bring your chair. Yes.
I forgot, does everybody know Ben here? Does everybody met Ben?
Well, Ben, we met Ben once.
He's your other sole agent, Ben Spatter here, we work together, we're a worship team. He's been doing all the riding, like the same. Taking all your criticism and. And part.
Yeah. Alright, so rather than have a PowerPoint, they just print it out by PowerPoint and kind of work, work through it together, but the idea is, um, I'd like to take a few minutes just to reflect, because the visioning session was some months ago, right? And so, um, Ben has helped type everything up and you have the materials in front of you, so, so I just thought we would take a few minutes to do that before we jump into goals and objectives, to make sure that that that's fresh in our mind, what was the community and what it was. So what was one thing you never want to lose about this place? And those green boxes are mine. I I that was supposed to be animated, but it was very clearly, um, yeah, the natural area of public land, major forest, rural, right? And then you have a few others, the constitutional rights, old fashioned, etc., but overwhelmingly, the nature. Is top of mind for folks. And then understanding the presence, we had, um, we asked for what are the strengths and what are the challenges? I'll just give you a minute here to look at this on the phone. And if there's an asterisk, that means two, three, four, five people on the asterisks there are, it would say he responds. Was anything jumping out at you, what strengths and what?
I don't understand what outdated traditions are going to go away. Not moving.
I don't want, I don't say, but I don't think Cal does or support our strengths.
Yeah, I hope so. Yeah, I'm not sure we've said that. It's the challenges of.
I, I think if we could get, but yeah, it's, I mean, you know, it's. I. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's. It's. But it's, it's something that we have and have had, and it's something that they are in the process of updating through the monies that are coming through. It's kind of unique to us, because not everybody can say they have their own telephone company, which can have its challenges, but can also kind of have a fun, belongs to the community. And they are, you know, we talked about jobs, and the people who are doing the fixing of the internet and so forth, those are all P and B grads. Those are folks that graduated from the school here, got the skills, and are coming back and working for Cal, the telephone company. And, you know, and it's kind of, you know, it's, my husband is a retired teacher, to have the students show up, I mean, he didn't teach them those skills, they need to teach him those skills. But um, but you know, it's, that to me, we talk about employment, that's an employment. That is an employment base, and it's something that we've got in place, you know, and it's our local folks, so. So, housing, uh, we see that throughout the document, uh, housing, light, transportation, slow internet, we're the ones that have duplicative, um, challenges. And I just want you to have this sort of top of mind or refresher, right? And what what is it that people say as we go, start getting on the goals and objectives? Um, because the the public said some of these things, or there's a one or two things, think of it kind of contextually, you don't have to have a goal to address every challenge that's on the list. For example, you have the discretion to prioritize and decide what you want to formulate goals and objectives for, okay? Alright, let's flip over the page. Well, first of all, is there, oh, one other thing before we move on, you have your new blue, um. These, we ask folks at the end, some reflective questions, the themes that have emerged, what's one that I feel that intrigued you, is making it uneasy? Um, so let's just take a minute, they are, I would say, on the left, housing? In terms of themes? It's the overwhelming. That worry.
It's kind of funny, cause like, a couple ones down, it didn't make you uneasy, and it's all the development. So it's like, you know, it's just kind of polarizing, I mean, I I understand the great need, you know, for, everybody wants their own house, yard, you know, everything, everybody does. But you kind of have to, you gotta grow a little bit, you gotta belt, you know, get that stuff. It's just kind of interesting to look at.
Yeah, and then the idea, the intriguing idea was a lot of more community development, um, rail sidewalks. Wellston, Wellston town center, little shops, you know, a lot of that is things that the plan, which you can't necessarily make happen. Uh, but, you know, farmer's market. There was a lot of, there was some discussion around a trailer, a nice trailer park or a tiny house, there's the, I mean, or just sort of this idea of clustered, a little bit more of a clustered. Housing affordability options, somebody said to keep tiny house around Dublin store. That was, yeah, so that was kind of a theme, um, that we saw. The preservation of Tiffy Dan, two, um, was was something that came up, that was, that one's already got lost in the shuffle, but, um, that came up.
Housing is gonna be hard.
Yeah.
Rockers are willing to make too much money out here. I mean, I've bought one. And we have not operated, I was in forty thousand.
Yeah.
Seventy thousand, they have a lot. Being ready to build on it. Pretty hard to swallow.
So moving on, um, to the map. We see a lot there, but there was a lot of activity, the Wellston map is over there. Um, pickleball, car shows, coffee shop, farmer's market, just a lot of people put their green, green and yellow dots on that, and you. And you, you have a current goal area called commercial town center, commercial development. So, this is not off the cart, but it's just something to keep in mind. There was a lot of excitement around that. Anyone else want to share anything or, you know, maybe something's coming up like, oh, I, I remember that. Or seeing what you did or anything from the vision session?
One of the things I think that is maybe building a better understanding, you know, we're talking about housing. We have a lot of light housing in this area. That housing, if it was going to continue to be changed into housing that people would want to move into. If you use what was existing and then you brought it up, you can use brownfield monies. And Norman hasn't really moved much into that. But the reality is there is, there's good support within the county to help move forward and that would gift the housing.
Okay, you just spit out a ton of goals.
I know.
And objectives. So, we're gonna come back to that, but that's the kind of thinking that Bob's talking about. What can we do? What is something we can't do? You know, we know it's expensive.
Or here's the goal, how?
Yeah, here's the goal, how, how do we, what are some things we can do to get there?
I have the grant. So, do we have a grant writer?
Oh, county.
So, would grant writer go to the county? We'd be like, hey, county, do you have a grant for?
County's not gonna do anything for us free unless they change.
Well, they're in the brownfields.
The brownfield will.
Development before you go.
But to get to that point, again, this would be part of the.
It'll be part of the goals. But I'm just saying that we don't want to write off, you know, that we can't do housing. We've got opportunity.
A lot of communities utilize a lot of their own internal resources. And by internal resources, I'm not talking me and Ben and the township board and you. I'm talking the people in the community that have talents and want to help the community.
I was even thinking like a simple solution to that, and I know it's a goal, but like just like, you know, you, you go by people's houses, right, and they're just junk in the front yard or wherever. It's just, we're in, we're in sticks, right, so it's everywhere. You know, we, we have one cleanup day a year for like three hours. I've missed it for three years. I've been out of town, you know, you know, we have a lot. We, we have a bunch of local, we have a bunch of local businesses. Well, I don't have any.
I don't know what it is, but I can make it.
Yeah.
I deliver their own.
Do I have junk in my yard? Thank you. Ah, I have a chicken running around. But it's something I'm sitting there thinking about, you know, I, I, I'm hearing all these people like, oh, their yard looks like they're in my neighborhood, this and that. It's like, well, why don't we have, you know, a cleanup day every quarter? And leave the stinking dumpster there for a whole week? He looking at. Yeah, but it doesn't have to come from township. It can come from local business owners, you know, and stuff. And it doesn't cost a fortune to rent a big dumpster for there for a week, you know?
More goals.
I know, it's a goal, but I don't want to forget it because you were talking.
We're gonna get there.
Yeah.
Soon. Okay, we might get some stuff done. Yeah, so alright, let's talk about, so some of the view, for some of you, this might be new. Like thinking this way in terms of goals, objectives, policies. So, let's flip the page. But first, but this is just kind of showing the vision is the big, goals are big, objectives, and then policies just get more narrow. That's the focus. This next page just shows, there's no, there's no set number of, if you have a goal, you have to have two objectives. You have to have five objectives. There's no magic number. You get to decide how many goals, objectives, and policies, how many policies I needed to support the goal. Completely up to you, okay? You could have ten policies, you could have one policy, you could have no policies. You have a lot of discretion. That's, that's what that means. So, here's an example of goals. We're starting at slide number eight. So, on the right, I'm just gonna walk through these examples. So, the goal is develop an economically vibrant downtown business district. Maintain our community's strong agricultural industry, right? Those are goals, very broad. How do we do that? Okay, let's turn the page. Objectives. We get a little clearer now, a little narrower. So, for that same example of develop an economically vibrant downtown business district, now we have determine flexible zoning options for mixed use and outdoor social district. So, we're getting somewhere, right? And for the agriculture, develop new high density development toward existing infrastructure in New York town. So, we're getting into some more strategic ways that we're gonna do this. And then a policy, I might add too, your, the, the current ordinance sort of ends at goals and objectives. Would you agree to that? I'm sorry, the current plan. It's sort of like, this is what we have, goals and objectives. There's nothing wrong with that. But you have a decision to make here tonight, like, no, this is really what we want to do. So, policy statements. We're getting a little deeper now in terms of the policy to create that flexible zoning to support the objective. Now, we're gonna conduct a walkability study to determine high traffic areas and define an outdoor social district boundaries. And then for the agriculture example, we have reduce minimum lot size, etc. So, you can see how these, these are actions that, that you all can take or staff can take, right? That support your objective and then the goal of that. Is that making sense? Okay, so that's kind of how I want you to think about those things. Next page, these are just some quick examples. That top page is, these goals and objectives, you can rely on other, other governmental entities. Citizen groups, regional partners, you know, we're gonna work with the county. We're gonna work with housing org. We're going to work with blah, blah, blah. Or we're gonna work with the township. Maybe there's policies and objectives that the, actually the township board would probably need to deliver on and not this body. But you have, you have some discretion to, to say, we're gonna tie in a lot of other things. Because this board really is, is more zoning, right, is your bread and butter. But when it comes to planning, you can partner and cast that net a lot part of. And then the next one, slide twelve, is Bob was saying, you've probably seen this smart goals. I think it's smarty now. I don't know what the Y stands for, but.
Yada, yada, yada.
Specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, you know, time bound type of, that's, those are smart goals. Easier said than done. So, let's talk about really quick here, I have some, I have some examples of several other communities that provide a little bit more of that specificity that Bob was talking about. So, the Gratchett County master plan, you see the objective on the top in red. And then strategies, and then a timeframe, short, mid, they probably have long term is an option. Potential partners and potential funding sources. So, you don't have to do this. These are just examples, okay? You're gonna take like, take the temperature and see what you're comfortable with. City of Alpena, similar, they have, you know, large subject areas, community, character, quality of life. They have their objectives there. Well, the goal is on the top of the green and then they have ongoing, medium, long term timeframes. And then who's the responsible party? The D B A, Downtown Development Authority, the Planning Commission, the Department of Public Works. Keep in mind, this is a city with departments. So, a little bit different, but the idea is who's the responsible party? We have these objectives, but who's really gonna do it, right? And if you really don't know, maybe it's hard to deliver on, you know? Really don't know who's gonna do it.
Like do it, like carry out community events, we're gonna do these things.
Yeah, if you, if you have goals, you have to think about, if you want, you have, want goals that like, there is nobody that can do this.
Yeah.
Realistically. It's just something to weigh.
Is formatting wise, should the section look more like tables like this?
You can.
Would standard?
Whatever you, kind of whatever you end up with. In my opinion, right? Because they just copy pasted the whole into the new format.
Needs to be shorter.
But you have free reign.
The example I presented with the planning commission several months back, what White Cloud did was they, they, they skipped, I don't want to say skipped it, they just made their goal more specific. And then said, here's our policies or here's the actions we're going to use to get there, period, two parts.
More like a strategic plan.
Yes, exactly, more like a strategic plan. You know, improve communications throughout all the departments in the city. One, we will have at least two joint meetings a year between the city council, the planning commission, and the zoning board of appeals. We will make sure there's at least two joint meetings a year between city council, D P W, and whatever. Just here's what we need to do and this is how we're going to do it. And you could all, it was so specific that you could literally use the master plan as a checklist to see if you were working towards those goals.
Currently, all of this right here is like circular talk and not the first page.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
So, we can almost get rid of all of this, incorporate a couple of parts in here. And just use this to cover both, don't actually have like our goals.
I'm gonna give you some time to really play the role.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's coming. Marquette County, they have, they're really like, go to our implementation, see where we're at, download our strategy.
They have cool websites, yeah.
All on the website. Another example from village of Casapolas, they've, they've been able to do a lot in a little amount of time. It's a tiny village, but you see their goals, their objectives, and then they have, you can't really see it, but implementation matrix and priority value, priority, what's our, what's our priority? Is this a priority one, two, or three, right? So, I don't need to do this to confuse you, it's just kind of like, what are the options for us to think about? And here's two examples from, it's actually the same thing. It's just, sorry about that. But here's your, your current master plan. So, you have on the top to promote recreation, the township's shell. So, that's kind of the, the goal is to promote recreation, and then you have these objectives. So, we'll fast forward ahead to the next slide, next theme. So, this is kind of our opportunity for you to, to think about what you're looking for in terms of the architecture. So, I've heard some things like circular talk, it's too long. So, let's just have a discussion about, you know, less, less is more. I'm not sure where you're at. Keep it the same, keep it about the same. You're looking for a mix, maybe streamlining some goals, maybe prior, you know, giving some high priority goals, some more detail. Generally, we need more detailed policies to take action, right, or something else. So, yeah, let's just have a discussion here about what you think would be most useful to you as a board and useful to the township. Without being, we don't want to like be overly complicated. So, what I'm gonna, I'll tell you what's coming too. I am gonna have you look at what's, what's maybe working, you know, the categories. And we're gonna work through the categories, decide what's working. You can even, you can absolutely borrow from the current objectives. Oh, this is still really good, right? We're gonna recycle that. So, this is, you're still gonna have the opportunity, I just wanted to take this time right now to talk a little bit about what you're thinking about in terms of structure.
Why not use a real life example as far as structure? I wasn't here at your meeting, but you recognize that housing is, is an issue, or the people that here recognize housing is an issue. So, the planning commission would come up with the, with the broad statement or goal that, that says, you know, the Norman Township general area is experiencing housing issues related to availability economics, blah, blah, blah. And then maybe narrow that down into specifically what we're capable of doing and how, and how we're going to get there. And that, you know, those, those bottom tier things may be, we might need to take a look at neighboring communities or zoning, and she put examples in there, are we too restrictive on lot size? Why don't we allow cluster housing? You know, we, we still use, in my opinion, outdated terms like apartment houses and community houses, and we don't define them in our ordinance. We're working on a lot of this over in Wexford County. Just, you know, like I think that it needs to be a, a visual representation of what you want and how we're going to get there to make it happen.
I, I like the idea of either priority over near term, short term, and long term. This may be a priority three thing would work well prior to one thing, kind of like you say, number something like that. So, like if we had our goals, we could say like, priority one goals, like the priority one, the housing, jobs, probably, the job of big business and business, big houses.
That sounds like circular talk.
Yeah. That, that works, alright.
Yeah.
People won't move on here if this.
So, I hear, I hear priority, you prioritize one, two, three. Any other kind of structural elements that are useful?
Do you want this more in charts rather than words? That's, anything I tried to do with the old ordinance coming into this, were more, less words, more charts, graphs, and this, this one is all words. There's nothing, there's no graph, there's no priority one or two or three or anything like that. So, to shorten it, just have more bullet points with graphs.
Or spreadsheet?
The strategy can be written out, but you know, your goals, charts, and then the strategy can be written out.
When you said like the sky chart, each one of this is really good. You know, it gives the rural feel, it gives the township master plan, you know, updating every package. It gives, you know, what, what really did it. But then it has to go into the other, the other things that are just endless. And haven't, haven't, haven't been done. I mean, they're there, but they haven't been worked on.
A lot of it's the same thing, just a little word differently in the next section. Natural resource protection is also a whole one.
Alright, so a little activity that we're, I'd like to start with. Because we're, we're diving out into more, we want a little bit more of a spreadsheet deal. I'm hearing less, a little bit less than what we have now.
More concise.
It's too much, it's more concise, okay? Alright, so let's try to think about some of the architecture of it. And what I did here, on the left, it's a little confusing, but you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and you have thirteen different headings if you, if you go to your plan. You know, it starts with farm and forest, for example. And I don't want you to exactly take mine, but here's what I'm wondering. Let's start with thinking about what, what, what is the low frame, low hanging fruit in terms of, what is, what is the heading, a heading, we're just talking about headings, okay? That we want to bring over to the plan. And what I might call is buckets, like where are our bucket, what are our big buckets gonna be? That we're gonna organize around and have objectives for. Now, you can keep those exact same buckets for ease. Or you can say, I heard Mary say, we don't really have farming. So, so a thought that I had was, you see like these yellow here on the side, there's, there's rivers. I feel like I missed one, maybe. There's environment and forest and farm. And then I think there's another one that I missed, maybe, was rivers, lakes, waterfront?
That's on, that's on, that's on there.
Yeah, I was, I think, but I told, I thought I pulled these from your, your plan. Maybe I'm making that up. But there's no housing on here, for example, residential, it's called residential development. So, if you want to change that to housing.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna make, we can, we can pull over the blue, the blue ones as written if they work as is. If not, I'm gonna make a new header.
Can you take like waterfront areas, like ports, environment, environment? Can you take like waterfront areas, like forest, and farm, and environment, and all that shit under one?
Oh, waterfront areas, that's weird.
Natural resources.
Yeah, natural resources.
We have a whole natural resource section as one of the chapters.
Yeah.
Maybe put them off the other.
Alright, I'm gonna take this and just put it up here, cause I think we're dealt with it in housing, done here?
Yeah.
Okay, what other things did you wanna? I heard you talk about natural resources.
On like forest and farm, environment, waterfront areas.
I'll go to one.
You combine those all in the natural resource. I don't think recreation was going there too, maybe it wasn't?
I know, I was thinking, you separate, or so.
Recreation is part of the economy, too.
Yeah.
And the architecture, so.
So that's forest and farm.
What is the regional planning, and are they going to stay in there?
We don't have to use everything, I think.
Wait, environment? Environment. What else? And then waterfront areas. Okay, I don't think we wanna put that.
Do we need a transportation section?
Well, it's a thing, we don't have a lot of transportation, it's a common thing.
Technically, isn't, isn't complete streets and transportation a factually required element of the master plan still?
It's a complete streets.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be under here, that's, so we ran a station under there, yeah.
Yeah.
What if complete streets?
Well, back in twenty, was it twenty twelve? I've been around that long. Did, like I say, most, uh, rural places didn't adapt to it, but it was basically just like, correct me if I'm wrong here, Mary, allowing the like roads, rights of ways, whether you're rural, urban, suburban, city, and allowing it to be used for multimodal transportation, not just automobile. Think of the master, think of bicycles, think of people with wheelchairs, you know? Think, think ORVs, golf carts, or something.
Yeah, it's like, we're not just gonna plan for cars.
Well, it's, complete street is all that.
The public has a right to the right of way, however they might need or want to use it, but complete streets in rural areas gets a little confusing. But that might be multi-use pathways, but it probably doesn't use sidewalks down every county.
Or you might incorporate it into, if you, if you allow some type of cluster housing that sets back off the main road, you wanna make sure those people have access to the main road to get, cross the street to the library here.
Yeah. Alright, where are we now? What else?
Regional planning and zoning, do they need combined?
Probably not, I would say. Zoning should probably stay, as I say, as its own, just cause it's a lot of work that you do around it.
So zoning, that makes sense.
So community and recreation, if you have all kind of.
Future land uses already some check or anything like that?
Yeah, there's, you probably want some goals here, um, you, you're not wed to this, but.
You're just saying that community and recreation go together. Yeah, kind of go together.
I think the regional planning was put in there when they actually were thinking about regional planning. We still have the documents back in the records from pre-two thousand ten, of when they were considering some joint regional planning.
What was this? You want community and recreation?
Yes, community, combined.
Combined.
So it'd be community and recreation be a subset of community?
Yeah.
So community would be the head.
Yeah, the center and.
We just talked about recreation in the, here.
Yeah. Alright, and then this commercial town center, commercial development. Remember there was a lot of energy around Welston, around this. So, I'm not sure if you wanna keep this, or call that community, or, cause you might have multiple objectives under these, cause you're combined, right?
We could have some, touch on that in future land use and community and, yeah, a lot of other things. Might only be a whole section for, but let's touch it on, on.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Keep that commercial town center concept under there? Uh, I don't wanna read that.
So the regional planning requirement then, you had that one too?
Yeah, that's not a requirement, that was something that probably worked its way into the master plan very early updates back in the late two thousands.
Was that like a, we're gonna co-op with Wexford County and doing some stuff?
They were. Or to do it here in Manistee County, I know Kurt Schonner, the planner at the time, was working with multiple townships, uh, seeing if they wanted to do joint planning and zoning together.
Sometimes, sometimes this comes in too for joint assets, like a multi-use trail, watershed planning, transportation planning, and that kind of stuff.
Do that with our trash? Isn't there something that we're saying that we're in a?
Brownfield?
Yep, we all had to join up to get the better rate. Several counties had to go together to get that rate, and, um, so Norman is a part of that.
Or it could be called county and regional planning.
Yeah.
Just like, somebody just had to cast a wider net, okay, to do what you wanna do.
Cause like for trails, you know, there's a very active recreational group in the county that is looking, um, trail wise, and there's monies to be doing that. And so, there's that. There's also, you know, ORVs, the rules and regs, every township, village, whatever, has made their own rules. Law enforcement is not going to come out and enforce every, they're not gonna pull out a little check sheet, oh, you can do that in Norman, oh, you can't do that in Dixie. So they're not enforcing, and right now the word is that if you wanna have a good time and not get reinforced on your ORVs, come Welston, or Manistee County. So they're working with the countywide, and what will happen is there will be a countywide agreement of what the rules are. And that's what the sheriff's department will enforce, as opposed to one township says this, one township says that. It will be the common language. So being a part of that kind of thing, because that ties into our recreation, you know, and all of that, is that we wanna make sure that we're at the table.
Housing, housing is good too.
Yes, and that's where the brownfield comes in.
Yeah.
There's lots of help to do that, there's money not being spent, and we've got the structures benefit from it, you know? And, you know, it is a, what it is, and does everybody know what a brownfield?
I don't.
Brownfield is where, um, basically you do in lieu of taxes. So the builder comes in and says, okay, I'm gonna fix up this property, and correct me if I get it wrong, anybody? To, um, I wanna fix up this property, but in order to do it, it's gonna take a few more assets. So you don't collect taxes per se. You give a window of opportunity for them to be doing the fix-up. So there's an incentive for the builder, and then the incentive is, it's gonna go back on your tax base at a much higher value. You know, blight doesn't give you a lot of money, but property does. So it gives an opportunity of fixing up properties that otherwise might not be something that would be appealing. And so it's a win-win to get people to come in and do it, and it needs a little bit of patience. Sometimes you're not gonna draw that revenue, but when you start drawing it in, like the condos in Manistee are all good examples of what they're gonna be paying in taxes for a blighted property is much better.
Tearing down that old school.
Yes, getting rid of the, yes.
Getting toward that down, part of brownfield for development, they're gonna build apartments there.
Yep, there's gonna be, and it's gonna be affordable housing for, um, a wide spectrum. It's gonna be an upscale housing. Um, you know, people who have jobs that are looking and moving into the area are gonna be able, it's right where the old pen and school.
I think the construction company that I work for, I remember doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's part of Gary's, uh, community, like outreach kinda stuff.
And that's jobs, that's jobs, like you said.
Jobs, economy, economy should go as, yep, where? Over here, or economic development, or jobs.
Economic development would sound better.
Yeah, I like economic development.
Alright, you went from thirteen to eight categories. Pretty cool, yeah, alright, moving on now. Let's get into some mini creed here. And we'll take about twenty minutes. What I'm just gonna do is split you up into two groups, and the staff, you can like help, help the groups if you want. Or I can help one, you guys can.
Hey, there's five of you, I want you to split exactly in half.
Yeah, okay. We'll do two and, two and three. Um, and I'm gonna have you pick one, pick one of the topic headers, something that you're interested in. I'm gonna pass out another example, this one has pink sticky notes, I don't want you to get too confused. Yeah, so, we'll have you pick one of the topic headers, look at the previous plan, find if there's objectives or goals in there that you think are still relevant, highlight those in yellow. I'm gonna get you a yellow.
How do we circle and draw it for underline? Long column and save our natural resource.
And literally, if, um. I guess all you really need to do is highlight in yellow the ones that you wanna keep that you think are still relevant. You can have like cross out the other ones, but I think it's self-explanatory, okay? Um, then.
I can't be able to do it in here.
Oh, the directions are in, okay. Um, so we'll have you go through the old, and then from the input received, what are the objectives or new concepts you would add, based on the public input, your own discretion, of planners? Um, and once the groups are done with that, we'll have you kinda share that out, and so each group, you'll hear that on the hold. Okay, and then if it works, then you can kind of rinse and repeat this, going through, not tonight, but you can kind of use a similar process. Does that sound, okay, okay. So we're gonna look at the old, go through this, okay? Highlight what you want, the yellow, that's still good. Understanding the format's gonna change, and like, you know, you'll flush out some goals, priorities, checklists, like probably. So what do we?
Oh, yeah. Yes, you don't think so, yeah.
So we've got two groups.
It would be easier to cross out where I don't want.
I know, I know what you don't want.
Put you and not.
I'll come down to the side of the table.
Or is this an experienced thing? Do we have two members that are really experienced?
Nick and Mary, you're probably a little experienced.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll just make sure you guys are different.
No, no.
Yep, so why don't you three together, and you three together? Which, um, which topic?
Don't die.
First dibs, which topic does this belong to?
Which one?
What do I want?
Yep, what did she say? Housing, what did she say? Housing?
Housing.
Housing.
Okay. Sure, that housing, what you, what are you, what are you vibing with?
We'll take, sure.
It's just a thought, since it's the other hot topic.
Forest and farm and water, do you like farming or something?
Yeah, with forest and farm.
Residential development.
Forest and farm.
Like, Mary, can I?
Yep. And you've got a lot of time, you don't need to rush.
More on traditional zoning technique.
I should've started that one already. You think he's got an operation of farms, saying farm, or laws that go far we operate?
You're allowed.
Okay.
Which part of the area do you leave it? It's not needed, cause we're gonna support schools that are here to the right of.
Yeah, one topic under time that mentioned housing.
Catch that one?
So this isn't bringing encouraging. It's just anything that would fit under.
Anything that might fit under, um, anything that might fit under the housing concept?
Yeah.
So-called objectives that's there, not if they're, they're just more merit, that they're not.
They're ninety-nine percent.
Right.
Yeah.
What you think is good in these, we keep, you know?
Man, there's a lot of extra.
You need water?
Need, I'm wondering if they're gonna, what they're trying to say.
You're supporting homeowners to keep their farms, farms.
Oh, the farm status?
I don't think it's the worst of the status.
State or, state or.
Yeah. I don't know why we, we have to, something like that. I like the picture though.
I like your picture. That's a real.
Our circle of pictures.
I took that.
Picture stays that. Support the state constitution. I think we should, uh, we can figure that one.
I'm talking, I'm talking.
Saying anything against this is not allowed, it shouldn't be in here, say that we're going to allow, it's not allowed.
Part of the, highlighting, you know, farm sections in here, they're like thinking of the house as a topic.
Part of local, regional, state government, and nonprofit, which is either, or.
That was part of the reaching out to.
It does have a reach, that, that was a big kicker, a few, a few years ago, several counties, like a six county area was getting, and doing certain things in the counties that were aligned, for a regional, I can move for a regional, so a regional plan. And doing certain things in the counties that were aligned, for a regional, for a regional, so, regional planning, so.
Yes, so.
Can we reach?
Aren't such rich.
Right.
Around. I'm just like, what act are we gonna take to make that happen?
We wait long enough, it comes back though. It always cycles back. Now, what everybody wants, things in the downtown area, is the big place, right? For people want that, you know, to be connected to the, where, you know, we went and built outside of the town area, because we didn't want that. And now, everybody wants to be part of that.
Yeah. We're not gonna tell them how to do it.
No.
That's right.
Yeah. Encourage reforestation of steep sandy wet and other.
Yeah, so that's a good way of getting to know people, if they're, if they're.
Around, around St. Lake?
I had, think of the backwaters, I mean, you've got, but that's like, kind of waters there, and that one's like. Yeah. Everything. Yeah, they get to the crowd, I don't know. Some wild stuff. Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm waiting on a block.
Yeah.
We're just looking at.
So I read something of their academy, it's a Dallas residential commercial.
A part of it.
Okay, I.
I tried to look, distract the tourists, use, you know, virtual. Blend the.
The, the jam, I'm sorry, the jam is not part of the project.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Whatever this, whatever this watershed is right here, we got this.
I'm pretty sure that Timbers had some operator authority over it. Because.
Housing applications in town agents.
It was branded area, it was leased with Timbers.
How do you know, so, that's a big area.
I mean, I know that, I don't really question that all the way, but who knows, maybe it's the Timbers. It's not public.
Well, it's a lot of public campsites, so it's gotta be U S four or seven.
Or state combination of.
One man, families too, you could learn from it.
All the places that we've gone by.
Alright.
Anyways. Uh, crazy important to copy intact for us.
How is it actually? Probably in the community, and possibly housing, and I think, I think, because a lot of mixed use land, is not this type of use. But, you know, the, the ground floor commercial, the sand floor residential.
Well, they're working, they're working west.
P U B type thing. Looking at that, I wish it counted on a super micro scale.
You were saying that, let's see how it works. It already has, it has.
The state.
Also, our town, our town rentals came up too.
Oh, yes.
Cool lakes.
I don't have any on top, I'm trying to think of how to prove. Forests. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I just know.
Pretty, I mean, it's not, it's not taking about space, I think it can go into like sustainability. You know? And I think just.
It's the best thing of all of Florida.
Yeah, and I think if you, if you take out all that mortgage, you might have somebody being like, well, you have, you know, it's like a little guarantee. Yeah, yeah.
It's a little big that in the market price, and what you have, it's like, we can, it comes here, the price is still up. And if you're a hundred, twenty, thirty, you need to end up, it's, you're.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we have, like, I know on, on Thursday, there's gonna be, there's another kind of that's supposed to be built on this. From this budget. The price to build right now, it's.
We can plug that in.
Too expensive, and so, asking for more time, and the burden is. There'll be, but yeah.
If there's something that's not in there that you wanna add, you don't have to write a document for something to address, that's just.
Just do a chopping move.
Now, so the.
To, uh, to environment.
So where.
Extra notes for adding.
That's for if you wanna add.
Okay.
Yeah, like, short term.
The first one is the exact same one last.
Yeah.
That's a new thing.
Yeah.
It's the exact same thing as the other group.
That's kinda after you're not chopping.
I'm sorry.
The townships are now, the cities are trying to address it now, but states probably.
The thing that you don't do again.
Yeah.
That's pretty weird.
Why would state regulate?
I'm gonna, I should be anyway.
Yeah, it's a policy.
Oh, we're ready. Where can I get M E D C, you know, where can I get this?
A lot of like encouraged language, like how we do that, so. Yeah, every time they say encourage, we have to like.
Do a lot of duplex.
Yeah, I mean. It's not, you know.
It's really strange, and I.
You can put it in like.
I wish it was so we could work the relationship. Like broke home, I would grab the city, they're a lot.
Professional.
Fair one company, you're too basic. Next, you can have single Y duplex. Two bedrooms, a one end, one bedroom, a one end.
Do we'll give them.
The hundred and nineteen.
If that property.
That's still a lot of money to a lot of people.
Oh, yeah.
Still a whole hole, it's pretty.
I mean, that, I have an example of a duplex, and I don't wanna see you pee again.
Like, like, like you're single Y whole hole.
He didn't, it was, he bought it, um, from the people that have gotten it approved.
When it comes to any.
So we first.
Yeah, we kept him from expanding it.
Personally.
Or privately.
Keep it a bit, it's up to you. I mean, you, you time.
That's what they encourage us to do, and I think there can be like an overarching thing, you know, all of this environment stuff. It's like a little, you know, like, it can even be like an infographic. You know, a chart, you know, we knew infographics were cool, you know, cause they're like, they don't take up a lot of space. And you can have like. Interesting like statistics in there, you know, that's a right, like, you're not as much, kind of, or they don't know where it's.
Right, right.
Being active to you, hey, I care about the environment, obviously.
Well, when we talk about.
But you don't have to explain it in all of this, like.
You know, doing a.
Always have to in the environment.
We have several of those housing, in this.
We want it.
That started out.
I just still want, we're just gonna lock.
Fortile, bring in trailers.
Well, the old, the old, the old Timbers course, that never missed a picture. I thought that was like an idea.
Goals.
They become the lack of.
One, two, three, four, and chart, right? And primary next.
Yes, they don't fit our lifestyle, and.
Say that this is primary one, who's it primary two?
Category. They fall into.
What it is. And then we have like. Primary one goals.
Million dollar house.
Brief little intro about it, and then plans.
They could never. We're gonna hold them up. We're, we're expanding, we're going to.
No, with that, with that.
In tropical.
Right, yeah, I agree.
So we gotta get to housing somehow.
We gotta think about that idea.
Yeah.
So we did this. Before we had to take you like, like.
Story.
Yeah.
You think we, we would like to see that before.
Seeing a lot more than I was.
We got there.
I must've had a little moustache days.
Yeah.
Moustache, uh.
I don't know, I think ninety thousand is way too wordy, and you could get, you could cover all the stuff then, or you want it, when you don't.
How to graph, do it, like, visual, people like.
Remember that some of the wordiness is necessary sometimes, because planning is the basis for zoning, so. The basis for your policy, so you can't be, you can't be, so, you know, there's a balance.
I take them all out.
You don't have to be overly wordy, but on the other hand, sometimes you do need specificity, especially if, let's say, if township wants to do, we need to get a handle on short term rentals, right? That's just an example, where you have a pop, something you're gonna build on, and maybe adopt zoning for, or an ordinance board, or pay a grant for, you're gonna wanna fill that out.
Yes.
I would, I'd try to get a lot of short term rentals.
Why would you get a short term rental?
Or you just wanna regulate them. Do you wanna regulate them?
Option four then.
We don't?
So if anyone tries to rental, you're not allowed to have it?
Well, we know they're here, remember, zoning is permissive, with ninety nine percent of zoning warrants, I've ever worked with. If it's not a specific listed use, then it's prohibited. That doesn't mean that, you know, the ordinance could be invented to allow for a use, or the township, uh, takes a policy stand, and say, hey, we want the, to regulate the licensed short term rentals to permit them.
It's kind of like.
We know they're here.
We're at a point where they're everywhere.
Yeah.
And if your ordinance doesn't acknowledge it, then technically they're prohibited, but then you get into this weird thing of like, well, I've had it for ten years.
Right.
And nobody did it.
Well, we are.
So.
Yeah, and there's several that are so.
Well, spring coats.
It's quite regular. At least, but a lot of time I won't.
So my. Then they're renovated, they're all. They're, you know, that's technically. A business, as long as they have.
It's, it's.
Proper stuff.
We don't know.
Yeah.
It's, it's very complicated.
Really, is it really?
If people call us and say, can I do a short term? I have to tell them, no, it's not permitted by the zoning.
Fifty five hundred law.
And also because I know it's. We're doing a short term rental, the only thing you see is a home. You don't see that it's changing hands every few days.
Sometimes there's a truck there, some, some car.
And sometimes there are eight families there.
And then. We just wanna see that housing kind of.
And so that may not be a year.
To promote the maintenance and enhancement of the character of Norman Township well developed, balancing the need of the resident development, the township.
Yeah, cause you can't be on, you can't be on the books for that long. Especially if it does well.
Yeah.
You can have a different color, you want like rewrite?
Yeah.
I'm right here, if I, I went under the housing, cause I thought, well, let's.
So short term rentals here would have to be approved by the state, because they know they're not.
There's hundreds of.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
It's all in these fishing cabins.
Right, rewrite, okay, that'd be best.
Under the radar, cash only thing. I always wanted.
Well, we're all over.
Yeah.
Looking available for next week, we're seeing.
Yeah, technically.
Maintenance.
It's kind of like.
We're getting.
Morning, Bob.
Yeah, that's, I get called Bob when I get called.
Last time we seriously.
So I think we can sum up, see through.
At that time, we were coming up with the so-called.
Control.
One, two, and all that. Economic forces, and, you know, some of the standards still apply, but the economics have changed so drastically, in my opinion.
I mean, like, e. That doesn't, identifying. We're not. Important wildlife type. They just, they moved from.
This more.
Yeah, animals move when they wanna move, or they wanna move, so. Out of the, I just got, I just got like this, overpasses, you know, so like, big ones, sheep can run over, and they don't have that.
Well, we have that.
Oh, that's true.
To categorize which four countries have.
That's, yeah, that's really lame thing.
Twenty ten, and twenty.
So those, those things are. Ordinance, all the wildlife, have it, things on the endangered species are in the ordinance, are, I mean, in the obscure, the vast. Cause I put them.
That's a concern.
No.
That's a statement.
That could be a bull.
But, yeah.
I think it's a rule.
Zoning never said, well, what's dictating the people.
Enance.
Yeah, well, they call it conservation stuff.
That's kind of where I saw, under the zone.
Anybody who focuses.
We need to have a tackle for some of our housing.
But if we believe.
Well, when we already took care of that. We should. Natural resources section.
Master plan, we're trying to list the ball of threat.
Yeah.
Protect our ground line. We're not going to allow pollution.
Yeah.
Right? How you're.
Keep the lights off.
Recognizing.
Have people in the dark.
Was that before, because of the township and stuff, or did they?
That's just a copy of, that's just rewording.
I think it's to keep the community character consistent.
Well, I mean. Yeah, I don't want this tiny little house next to it.
And let's talk about housing, I had to explain this in a rural residential area, the housing, the why.
But it's, it's better to have a plan.
Take more like plan, just.
Oh, yeah.
Like, there's a three acre lot.
So, we got, we got everything for A's. We had C and D into. Once, yeah, hold it, control.
As they didn't have this section up.
Like a bag, like a reading paper, it's the asset thing now. Put that.
Under seven. That's our.
But for what degree, and that's what Zoning is gonna do.
Probably about five more minutes.
It's been like an economic, uh, separation, segregation, and that's how it started, you read, there's a, it's a cool white paper.
Same thing.
But A is already mentioned.
A more of a population, based on color, based on income. But that.
So, yeah, so what I want you, what I want you to be able to kind of, to just kind of synthesize, is like, here's why we kept, here's what our, here's what our thinking, here's we wanna rewrite, so that Ben and Bob have an idea of your thought and process, and then maybe.
Do we have a brochure?
They can do a little more of that.
To educate properties, more of properties.
And B, under the housing.
Number D.
I, I kind of.
For the distribution of existing brochures.
I thought I, I probably would've ended it.
That's not a bad idea.
You know, the, courage, I would have the one sentence. You know, cause I don't know, I'm walking with a guy, places like campus, some great ruins, and. I don't.
Hey, you have trees.
Well, I guess you're saying.
Don't count it down.
Well, this is a presumptuous, you know, God.
We're just gonna say.
Future special land use, such a mobile march, undermolded, they're housing, and I hate it. Planners put that in the master.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a special use, because it may be an actual fit, and panel or something.
Well, I think, I think Zoning are.
Just a best example, I think.
It's down on the water, it's in the natural.
And they're, I can resolve it all, it has mobile holes. Take it.
Corridor. We, we already have.
Down to a keyhole, or a stage room.
We have, we have done that.
Let me just, I'm like.
We do that. We don't let them build.
Alright, I think we're gonna cut you guys off.
Cut me off.
It's almost a summation of the whole plan.
Yes.
I just don't think the hours can be laid in. So, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of stop now, and I'll invite your groups, and, and, you'll have one main talker, but the other people can chime in. Talking about what, what you kept mostly, and your reasons for keeping it, and then maybe some overall themes about what you're letting go of. Um, and then make sure, what I kinda wanna make sure, for record keeping purposes, is that you have a document amongst you, I think, I don't know if you all.
I'm gonna collect them.
You're gonna collect them all? Okay.
The instructions say where.
Alright, so she'll collect them all, but hopefully there's some consistency.
Just make sure this one.
Yeah, so it's kind of.
I just think it'd be like a master one.
That's what I figured, so they have a master one.
We have a master certificate.
Master, okay, yeah. Alright, so let's start, maybe on this side, um, what kind of things did you keep, wanted to change, you wanted, you're gonna throw out?
Uh, as we all know, uh, we have natural resources, uh, forest and farm is its first section, we are keeping A. It, we're probably gonna reword this a little bit, but A, multi-establishment and operation of farm states, our market. It will probably get reworded a little bit, but A, multi establishment and operation of farm states, our market and scale. Small scale farming operations, especially farming really contract, thought that was awesome, we're already doing that, so let's just keep that going. The rest of it is redundant, um, already mentioned somewhere else in this document, or a state or a federal thing that we're supporting, that we don't need to explicitly state, we're gonna support it, cause there's no actionable thing to do because we're already doing it. Bring it down to the end of that section, we felt that pretty much E, F, G, H, were all essentially the same thing. Um, as a either was it, it was just wordy, it was just talking to talk. Um, and then, uh, I though, recognizing importance of healthy intact forests and providing wildlife. We like that, just wanna redo the wording, um, and then encourage the reforestation of steep sandy wet and other fragile soils. But that will actually feed well into waterfront areas, so we go off into chapter seven, number seven. And to support the distribution of existing brochures and other materials to educate property owners and waterfront properties, and these are for MSU extension apparently. Uh, what's this here? So, we have those?
I don't know.
That's who you do.
No, it's Twenty years ago.
It'd it'd be cool if we could figure out something like that.
Yeah. I don't know.
We're gonna be on the shot.
Yeah.
We can check. Uh, and then, um, as far as the rest of water, cause we're already there, uh, the rest of it, didn't make a whole lot of sense, cause we already mentioned them, other parts of the plan. Or in the environment section, which we go back to. Then in environment, we liked A, multi touch sensitive environmental resources, including alluded to speech folks, but then wildlife habitat, plains, sneaks, waterway to shorelines. The rest of it, we didn't really like, uh, cause it's same problem as the other two sections. But, uh, sections C and D, we thought were nice, we can reword those as like an intro to the natural resources section of that goal.
Then did you get all that?
Yeah.
Contextually, you understand that?
Yes.
Right.
Like a one sentence thing.
Yeah.
Norman Township likes natural resources.
And then from a process side of things, maybe, you know, Bob, then you can, you could maybe populate that. Well, let's question
Well, I think Doug did such a good job, he's gonna be defensive, administrative, uh, assistant on those, I guess.
I'll I'll second that most.
Yeah, he's good, yeah, if you wanna kind of back to that with, remember that more detailed level of policy? Do you want to have things that kind of support that, like, we'll change zoning, we'll do this, we'll have buffers, we'll or do you wanna keep it just kind of general but less wordy? Am I making sense?
Well. Okay. I'm not sure I understand about that, but I I like the approach of doing like the goals, the priority one, two, and three with what our goals were for those, and then right here having like priority one goals, housing, a small little word about it, and then the goal.
Okay, alright.
That's
Play with some
That what you're kinda talking about?
Yeah.
So then we have like a one sentence intro, and I can, we can almost sum up three quarters of all of what they're saying here in one little sentence. Then it's more actionable, and that's all. Here's fifteen things you wanna talk about, there's no way to get there.
Do you feel like you have a jumping off point?
I have more
What do you say?
I have more
He probably has more Cause I wasn't part of that group, I was listening.
Just kind of like how you wanna structure the document?
Right.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Anything else?
It's just my opinion, you guys have better ideas. I just hope that that might bring words.
One of the things to kind of throw out, cause under our bylaws, we encourage that we have the National Forest Service be involved in, um, part of our planning, that we get updates from them, and so I'm wondering if that would be something, you know, that would be an action. But, um, but they're also at the table, and in the county, they are at the table. Um, and, but now they're located out here, so to me, it makes sense that if we're looking at that, we put that somewhere there. You know, I feel like that's been lacking, you know, we're not getting the information, you know, when they're doing a controlled burn, we're not getting that, you know? And that kind of stuff, and yet they're in our backyard.
Yeah.
And
I cojoin a meeting with them, or invite the door, I need us to present what they're doing in this area.
Yeah.
Just the knowledge that they can, you know, again, it's a cooperative. You you join them with other groups to to find out what they know, cause they're the experts.
So maybe make a note on there about you know, yeah.
But like, get updates for a service?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
And then natural resources, like, so a goal will be to get updates and how we're gonna do that and make a joint meeting.
Maybe annual
And
All the, all these web land things, the D N R.
Right. And the D N R also would be the other one, that would be, you know, that we would be getting that, um, and we have a, is the one? The watershed.
Eagle.
Oh, yeah, eagle, yeah. But the watershed too, there's an active watershed in that part from us, but we don't have much land that's involved in.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Well, if we wanna know about our natural resources, those are the three groups to get to know.
Yeah.
To work with us and teach us.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And they should be showing up here to give us that information, I mean, they could, I have visions of Norman Township putting on a big screen so that people who might wanna talk from somewhere else
Yeah.
Screen.
Hey, that's a great review.
That's it, that's true.
You know.
That's more of that's
That can be more for community.
That's a whole, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But And even under the public facility, that's by public facilities.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Cause that would sort of tie in with what we're talking in terms of housing, because we're gonna need more help to do housing, right?
Cause it's over here.
So.
Alright.
You want?
I'll I'll be primary speaker, you guys can chime in, but I'm like the group of the other, and we tried to follow the specific directions here. So, so
We're trailblazers, Bob.
So We're Ash and Mary. So So we chose housing, and of course, you know, we're trying to look at a lot of objectives and the current master plan will carry over, and we we found, uh, objectives under the general goal, and it's the forest and farm, community, residential development, uh, you know, commercial town center, but we'll, so we, we definitely, or we highlighted and yellowed those areas that we thought would carry over into the housing, but we also uh, looked at some of the other objectives strategically that are in the master plan, that in and of themselves seem to be many goals rather than objectives on how to get somewhere, and I just wanna read one for the heck of it, because to me, it doesn't, I mean, I understand what it says, but it's it's huge. Support the establishment of and or, oh, this is, this is actually under general goal, it's, uh
Page sixty nine.
Yeah. Page sixty nine, uh
Left hand corner.
Yeah, then you have the two columns, by halfway down, two thirds, support the establishment of indoor efforts by government, land and or historic preservation conservancies to protect historic buildings and places important natural areas and significant farms in Norman Township, I mean, that is a mouthful, we've already established, you know, I don't know why it's still in here, back in twenty fifteen, we established it. This is not a farming community, you know, we had no historic farm, we got on first few, we might have a couple of people, gray scout, and I get taking complaints all the time, so you know, just totally not gonna carry over. Uh, so if if we're looking at housing, you know, the rest of these objectives won't carry over, but we we added in some ideas too on housing that probably ought to be included. Uh, I know, uh, Michael and, uh, Mary had some ideas too, and a lot of this comes to me, since I've been doing this in other communities. And we're looking at things, uh, how to be more inclusive, the justification for minimum housing size, and the maintenance of the community character, what happened to the old tourists, of course? Which brings us back to, well, maybe we'll go back to the mini T U V or cluster housing, uh, community well and septic, uh, the impact that short term rentals may or may not have on a community, be that good or bad, uh, you know, minimum housing sizes, I think I already said that. But, uh, again, we found even areas in future land use that that are just in our opinion, they they look good, but they're giving no direct guidance, and we need to focus that down so the planning commission has more direct guidance for the goals, so when we go to implement these through the zoning ordinance, we know exactly what we're doing, we're having to guess and grasp the straws. Anybody wanna add to that?
I I think we are also looking though for a balanced, uh, from things that we've seen done in the past that didn't work. Um, that we've learned from some of our mistakes too, you know, um, Bob had mentioned something in terms of duplex, but the duplex would definitely be different than the duplex that we currently have across the bubble Marys, that is not what we want to have out there.
Well, some of that Actually duplex. Some of that's a duplex.
It's too small a property for what's on it.
Hmm.
So and for where it was was placed, but, you know, balancing that of, you know, when we're talking, you know, we talk about having subdivisions. Um, we have subdivisions that have been built in the past, and some of those places now are considered blight. So how do we balance what we're doing that it doesn't turn into that? And that's the the challenge, you know, we we had communities that were built, but how do we we balance that they don't become your eyesore as opposed to your gel?
Change the blight in our own, is that it, possible?
Speaking of speaking of blight, uh, would that go here, could be zoning and blight, I noticed blight was a big asterisk.
Yeah.
Could go as a big thing under community too.
Where should it, where should it go?
I think more zoning.
I don't think.
Yeah.
Zoning.
Okay. I'll just call it zoning and blight.
Yeah. Cause I want community to be fun.
I
You know, I want community to be something you're excited about.
See, from a zoning perspective, I strongly discourage blight being intermingled with zoning.
Shouldn't be in the zoning.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Two different things.
Okay.
It would be a separate ordinance.
Yes.
Okay.
So separate.
Yeah, that would be a zoning ordinance, I thought, like, oh, yeah.
It'd be a non-zoning ordinance.
You're right, wouldn't be.
Economic development? That that could be a tool for
Well, zoning and blight, so it's not like
Okay.
It can be an and, like, blight is different.
So it can be an and, okay.
But I'm thinking it is kind of regulation.
Like a strawberry milkshake, it's like strawberry short
It's in the ordinance.
You're separate.
Yeah, they're separate.
There's a zoning ordinance
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Both thinking each other.
Yeah, both good.
I I don't wanna forget that.
It's a sore
Alright. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so as like a jumping off point, there's a couple of things I'm thinking, one, one is you might need to have some special meetings this summer, do you mean once a month, or every other month?
Just about every month, they took a couple of months off while you had your little thing, and last month, and this is
Okay, yeah, I mean, just something to think about, just, cause cause we are, you're doing a major remodel here, I'm sorry, that's my fault, but perhaps it was necessary, it was, right? Um, and so you have a jumping off point, but this is very time intensive. If you have applications coming and that kind of thing, so just be thinking of, you know, maybe we need one or two special meetings, like work, work meetings.
That's what I'm saying, work.
To do this.
Yeah, work meeting.
Um, just to keep things moving along, but in the meantime, um, staff can probably come up with some prototypes and things like that for you to look at with based on what you've said about housing and natural resources. And and then I think what you have, that you'll be able to do the other ones a little bit faster. But just thinking about what's good in there, what we're gonna add, like, you know, on the housing side, short term rental, like what, you know, what's here now, this ten years that wasn't here ten years ago. Tourists, right? Yeah, tourist tourism isn't too bad, cause preservation, right, it was number one, and that was on everyone's, this is why we live here, don't change it, and we keep it
Right.
How do we keep it? Um Bob.
I like the idea of just having a work session to work on this, carving out some hours to just do this.
Do you have any basic work for it, Bobby?
I can do, uh, that is not the second treat date of the month.
I'm I'm gone for a week and a half in July.
Really?
Oh, why?
I'm
As long as
You get a hand base of peace.
Ben, you can do questions.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What, I I know you guys can't say what you mistake, but what's a like a realistic expectation, you think, for how long this whole section will take? I just told, out of my curiosity, so we can kind of plan out how many more seconds we're gonna need and
Well, you've done three things here.
Yeah.
That are circled, and
Yeah.
and I can take those and make templates of start with chapter A. I don't I even have to worry about there yet, because I'm working. But I could start and come back at a work session and present those to you.
And we've got a lot of information on housing, so we've got two major topics started.
Just I know I'm gonna do questions from the board meeting about what timeframes and this, so I was trying to be able to take back some information that I'm from mine.
I think that might be more of a ban answer, but at the same time, our near term homework might be, if if I understand the consensus of the planning commission, nobody objected, I like I like what Doug said too, you know, the priority, one, two, three, you know, the uh, goals. Whether whether that's prioritizing your goals and prioritizing those objectives within the goals as well, so. May maybe you want to see a model of one of these first, say, hey, here's a model, you know, what do you think of this? Strategy. And then I think after that, it would be up to you to see if you want to set a couple of special meetings and there's there's no limit on timing. You know, it's it is summertime, I my goal is to actually see this done before the calendar year ends.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of.
You know, the sooner we get this chapter done, we have a draft, we have to get approval from the board to distribute the plan.
Right.
This is a major rewrite, that's gotta go out for a sixty-three day of public or public comment period, so to speak, or public notice and but there's nothing saying, you can't say, okay, we send this out July fifteenth, September twentieth is about sixty-three days. There's nothing saying at our local meeting, we're gonna have a public hearing and you could be doing a lot more work finalizing at that time.
I guess I'm just kind of looking at, you know, if I can take back the parts, I give them the information, the updates on what we're looking at, just that's all. I know I was gonna get questions on it, so I just wanted the answers.
Yeah, and I did forward, did everybody get the coming master plan? So that you saw, I forwarded to each of you. Did you see it? It's within the last three to four weeks. Yeah, cause it's out now. Cause that's another place you can look at how language is done.
But could you reasonably imagine sitting here on another evening and doing the exact same thing and getting four of those topics knocked out?
Well, yeah, that's.
Or Saturday morning from eight AM till noon, getting the rest of them knocked out? Doing the exact same exercise that we did and then Ben and I have all the information that you're looking for.
Yeah.
I'm down for whenever, I just, July ninth, do the eighteen MO.
Okay, we gotta meet before then.
The twenty-second, next meeting.
Right, you'll be back by then, won't you?
I play my trip, I can hear that.
I'd like to, I'd like to get the chapter done by the twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Yeah.
This is all.
The July.
Oh.
July, July twenty-second.
Does July have work for everybody?
July first.
I can do it.
Next Tuesday?
I can do it.
Yeah.
Well, this is a work session, we're not really making any, there's no decision.
Right.
Right.
No, it's a work session.
I will not be here July first, I've got a meeting in another township, a public hearing that has to do with repealing an entire zoning ordinance, so. Have a report, I see it there. But I don't have to be here for you guys.
Uh, we're always more important than ours than they are.
My first word?
Yeah, I got it written down in the notes.
You make a motion to accept July first for a work motion, we're through that, a motion for that?
I think it'd be nice to document this, yeah.
I'll I'll first that motion, July first meeting for a.
Hey, six thirty?
When do you six thirty or six?
Six thirty, seven would be better. I don't have kids, I don't care, it's just.
I'm looking out, I could do it better now.
I can't keep doing that.
I know. Six thirty, July first motion, second. All in the paper?
I mean.
Alright.
I will post it as a special reading, note to the work session, we're working on a master plan, goals and projectos. And you just have to remember that no decisions can be made.
No decisions. But deliberation.
Yes.
The deliberation.
You want, you want to pitch your answer something?
And we don't have any other business, but.
So, yeah.
I want the chapter's office to make it, yeah.
Yeah, this was really helpful.
They give me some good ideas.
Yeah.
Do you want to grab a paper? Write it down?
Yeah. I need that, I need to.
To the query.
Chapter. Yeah. Note.
Good.
No, that's uh, didn't think anything there. I like my item, but I've worked. I got some scrap. That'll work.
There's.
That'll work.
Thank you.
Four thirty?
It's literally bedtime, dude. It's bedtime.
What are you thinking about?
I'm gonna be killer.
Please, like when you said eight AM, I'm.
Away from the party, you get something said.
Yeah, what? Any of those other classes that you would not. Yeah, it was hard to follow along when I. These are some of the examples of the activities that I went through. Yeah, awesome, thank you.
We do appreciate you, man. We really do.
What are we having at general?
Hey, we are in site review. Okay, I know that I have a, like, at this point or whatever.
Well, to do me, you could, what uh, you can do the appropriate thing to do is allow me to introduce it first. Once you get everybody back in order, we're all paying attention.
Alright, let's keep moving. Yeah, next thing we have is the site plan review for Fisher.
Alright, this is this is gonna be a mini training exercise too. Uh, and a little bit of education, we have our own issues, or technically according to the zoning ordinance, Ben and I in single family homes, duplexes, accessory buildings and agricultural buildings and anything else is either, if it's a prohibited use, uh, in this case it is, in the commercial residential district on picture properties, this subject is site plan and review by the planning unit. It's not that way in all communities, we'll talk about that later as we get into the master plan. And this is one of those uh, unique situations that I find is common in all zoning ordinances is they have a lot of standards that are almost irrelevant to brand new construction, being sticked to like, you know, a vacant piece of artwork. And it gives no administrative leeway for, you know, accessory building. Here you have an established business, um, in fifty-five, that for the lack of a better term, if I have a house, I put up a garage, that's what we're doing there. Another building, accessory structure. Did everybody read my staff report to follow, okay, first of all, this is a very basic staff report and I try to keep it that way based on type of use. So before we get started, uh, one of the things in our bylaws we have, the most known is a conflict of interest. In this case, I'm pretty sure Doug, as a part owner of the property, has a bona fide conflict of interest. And and he should recuse himself for participating at this time.
I should do it right now.
Yeah.
Particularly just, I recuse myself from the conversation.
Clearing a conflict of interest, then I think he can sit out in the audience and watch and remember. Now, Nick works there, that's why I printed off that little excerpt from the party, it's in our bylaws. I don't think any of those constitute conflict of interest on this part, like just being important. Unless he takes money over under the table, unless he's got a buy seller, he's Fisher, he's a best of broker, is any of that particular to you, Nick?
No.
Okay, I can verify that.
Okay. So I would assume just by virtue of him being employed there does not constitute conflict of interest and he allows him a review to go through this. And and I'm going to go through it very quickly, I don't want to reread my entire staff report because I assume you guys are gonna do that. Uh, this was a little more complex, what I do is try to do it in chronological order. The first thing you'll see in there, who who are we working with here? Oh, Mary, thank you very much, thank you. You know, uh, it it gives the applicant, it tells you how the property is owned, it gives a legal description, what they're proposing to do. I I go in, the next part of my staff report, this would even be for a major project, is I go into the specific zoning district standards. What are the setbacks, what are the property size, uh, it's all of that, uh, basically I wrote this in a bullet format to tell you what I found. You know, so, and I don't think any of those uh, standards are applicable. You do have at the very back of that, you'll notice in the uh, the commercial, I put C exhibit A because that's just kind of a detail of the site plan that was kind of microscopic, showing the size of the building in relation to the setbacks. It's way off the front line, the main building in, way off the rear, that's a super long parcel there. But here's where we get into uh, the standards for site plan review, and I just wanted you to see these and and I think hopefully on your own uh, intuition, when you read those, you'll know that we're not talking about a vacant piece of property where somebody's coming in and moving tons of dirt, they certainly are for this building to put it there, but it's not totally new construction. You know, natural features, utilities, yes, they're probably gonna have electric to the building. Uh, but I but I went through all of those and I personally do not think any of those are applicable. Now, the planning commission always reserves a right to say, Bob, we think you're crazy, we think they are applicable and we want them shown on the site plan. That's totally up to you. But for this type of site plan, down in the bold rectangle, uh, I use, this is a recommended finding and I would like the planning commission, the four of you to discuss site plans, kind of look at the standards, whether you take an hour or whether you take ten minutes, and I don't think they're gonna, I don't think you're going to make them put in uh, street trees, bike racks, fences and outdoor uh, tables, you know, as can be required by the planning commission. You can obviously see this might be uh, something that would be an open space associated with cluster housing or something there. And I used recommended findings for a word because findings and conclusions that support your decision are what a court looks at, and I don't mean that to say, oh, we're gonna be taking it to court or something like that, but that's how, that's what has to substantiate your decision, real findings. Not, I think the color blue is great, so I don't see a problem with it, but based upon the standards in the ordinance, we either see they are applicable or not applicable, the standards are met. And and mine looks, mine is a couple of sentences because you should never just repeat what I say, it should be based upon your own discussion. So what I would like you to do as a, who's the vice chair here? Doug had to leave the table, so you would simply lead the discussion, either one by one down the standards or cumulatively ask them to go through them to see if they think any of them are applicable and to what extent. And then based upon, and I like that word findings, I mean, you know, use use that as often as you can, make sure it's documented in the minutes. And then decide whether the site plan should be approved as it's presented, should be approved with a couple of conditions. And this is where it's uh, a hundred percent okay, where if you're not sure of something, is even though Doug sits at the table and he's removed himself, he may be the only one in the audience to answer one of your questions. And then based upon your discussion, make a decision. And I'm just kind of going to sit to the side and certainly ask you any questions if you have any.
And all of this with the one minutes though?
Yes, yes, well, you speak clearly, so it gets documented in the.
Your whole thing will also.
Yes, this this is something I'd like to do, usually the first thing I do when I do a site plan or a special use, when I do a staff report, I make sure that one of you say, hey, I think this should be incorporated into the entire record on this particular project.
Yes, so we want it in, it'll make Andy's job a lot easier and it also covers us because every piece that we've considered is now done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's it's, can I ask a quick question, what is the?
This is not public comment, that's point of board, this is a site.
I was just trying to figure out what the applicant is requesting.
That that would be a good uh, comment for the vice chair to make. Or I can introduce it, I could have introduced it, this is a sixty foot by sixty foot uh, accessory building. Uh, the, what's the official name, uh, Fisher propane?
Fisher Patrol, yeah, I'll see.
Thank you.
And 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 that's a good, can I interrupt just a little bit, I'm I'm sorry, because you know, you guys have never done this, I I do it a lot of times and and um, and join me, good point, you know, a lot of times these will be introduced. This is a Fisher propane uh, site plan review proposing to install a sixty by sixty pole barn to be used for general storage in association with the company business.
Thank you. And that's right on their property, alright. So we start with um, A, and go through that and?
You could do them individually, you could do them collectively and say, hey, does everybody take a couple of minutes to read through these, do you think based upon this project, any of these standards are specifically applicable and should be enforced by? You don't have to believe everything I say, I I personally didn't believe any of them were, I did make a couple of comments, you know, they're they're still, they still have to comply with the ordinance, they came with lights that scream all over the place, you know, things like that, they're meeting the setbacks. Yep, absolutely. I'll shut away some more.
So we'll just review them all and then we'll discuss.
It's gotta be fourteen or sixteen plus sidewalls?
I think it's actually shown on. Sixteen. Showed on page eighty-two of the site plan.
Here's sixteen inches. How much of the trusses, what's the ceiling height, I mean, not the overall height, outside height? Inside height? Swerving height?
Uh, it's clear span, so the roof, the cross height is gonna be roughly the same as the sidewall height. It might be a suspension shorter or something like that, but.
You guys have the uh, the discount? Did you get, you guys leave it on Wednesdays? Like the the twenty tonders, is it? Isn't that like your Wednesday? I recall in, I don't know if I've ever seen it in Wilson, but the Freesewell one was like a backup, get a huge line outside of the thing. Have you guys ever experienced any sort of like? And it's a pre, I usually drive by children all the time, I don't know if I've noticed it, but have you guys ever noticed like a, like a traffic backup?
It's not around you, well.
It's not, yeah, not around, not well, because it's like a quick end, it's a bigger, it's a lot bigger of a parking lot and they can they can come in from like the thoroughbeach and stuff. But I noticed it in Freesewell, man, there were, they had a track up on the corner.
It could have helped, it could have helped them go down.
Oh, yeah.
It hides that shit down there.
Yeah, oh, in Freesewell, yeah. That that, that would be my only thing, you know, just but if there's a pole barn.
It's not serious, nothing's.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not for any, it's not for the store.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, no, can we just vote?
More of an occasional fight.
Yeah, anybody have any, you know, besides the?
No, there's really nothing.
Nothing.
Rather, rather than vote yes or no, I would, I would like the planning commission to read my recommended findings. Maybe make a couple of comments in addition to or in support of, to make sure that the record reflects that, you know, your findings agree with my findings or any additional findings.
And I um, I'm thinking that we make a motion that we support what Bob gave us for the recommended findings. And that that is our motion based on it. We're supporting, we support staff's recommendation and that is also our findings. Unless anybody has anything different to add to that.
That works for me as long as it gets included in the minute.
Working on it.
Yeah, you put that whole language in.
All.
Can you type that?
Easter, perfect.
Okay.
Yep, as the motion, that's, you know, because we're, we're making the motion to accept the staff's findings and. Not gonna change it, and it gives us the language that we need, yeah.
I don't want to interrupt Andrew while he's busy typing, but hopefully you can see from these standards if this was a vacant piece of land, I would not have scheduled this at this meeting. You know, you you could easily take an entire meeting going through, but at the same time, I would try to help guide you where to find those at. Whether they comply or not, you'd be looking at the setbacks, we'd be looking at whether it had a traffic impact or not, whether it was too close to the road and you get two semis in and they got nowhere to go, or they backed out on the M fifty-five.
How how common is it, Bob, for concept to have a setup for commercial properties like we do, where we pass through on the planning commission?
Very common.
Is it?
Yeah. I, it's it's, over in Wexford County, we just amended the ordinance that allows Ben and I to do some of these for commercial for the accessory buildings like this, up to a certain percentage. Because every time it came before the planning commission, like, why are we? I I also work over in Tyler Charter Township on the south side of Manistee. I am responsible for every site plan that is not associated with a special use and even those associated with a special use. But I have to go through all of the standards and do my report and somebody comes in and gives me a complete site plan and wonder why they can't walk out permit the same day. So this would take me eight hours to do my report. Yeah.
So who's gonna make the motion?
I did that.
I'll be damned.
Yep.
Okay, I second.
Motion to approve that's like.
Love it. Yes.
Motion to approve uh, the.
Site plan.
Site plan.
All, all in favor?
Hi.
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 I think you can come back in a minute.
Will it load the backup?
Yep.
Yeah, you can come back.
I, I totally, totally forgot to tell you guys, I know a couple of months ago you were asking about the rumor about the cell tower and still nothing on it, other than, other than they called and said they were doing whatever site assessments they were supposed to do prior to signing a lease or something. And based on past experience, that could be thirty days, that could be three years, so.
Alright, so we can move to old business though? Do you guys have any discussion?
Yeah.
We are, we did, we had, we tend to do business.
Yeah.
Okay, public comment? Any public comment?
I'll save it for the public meeting.
Okay. Okay, go with that.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second, all in the favor?
Aye.
Awesome, guys, thanks.